This meeting of the Stockbridge Planning Board on March 16th to order. Thank you all for joining the meeting virtually as has been our custom. How long that continues is anybody's guess? Let me see. As always, the first item of business is approval of the last, not the last meeting. Cause I owe this group two minutes of meetings, the special additional meetings that we had with Jeff Lacy. I'm working on those. So what we have are the minutes prepared by Jennifer for the March second meeting, which are as usual, quite detailed and helpful. Does anybody have any comments on these minutes?
I have, I have two small suggested changes.
Okay.
Do you want me to go ahead or do you want?
Yes, please.
So I would just, it's on the third page. There's two instances of the word satisfactory and satisfactorily. It's a question how salt water affects habitat was answered with a satisfactory response. And then farther on down in the paragraph to me, that sounds like, like opinions. And, and I would, I would recommend removing those two phrases.
I can't, I remember reading those, but I don't, I can't find them at the moment. Did you catch that Jennifer?
Yeah, both of them were satisfactory, Kate.
Yeah, I can, I can email it to you if you want and highlight. I can, if you want, I can share out my screen and show you, but it's pretty.
I think I can find it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve these minutes as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second? Jennifer, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Gary?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. The next job or agenda item, and there is a revised agenda, which I hope you all got. It's marked revised in red. Is described as vote on amendments to the parking and sign and driveway bylaws for a public hearing. And the next one is, is sort of connected, which is zoning bylaw to amend 4.11.1 and point two, which has to do with residences in the downtown business district. I think we, we, we know, and I see Roxanne is on the call or in the meeting. Roxanne, speak up if you need to, but from conversations that and emails going back and forth, it's clear that the parking sign and driveway bylaws are really in effect still with the select board. So what we should be doing tonight or can be doing tonight is really focusing on the change in section 4.11.1 and point two relating to permitted uses. I think that's what it's called.
Phil, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So at the last meeting, as we recall, we received the, the parking sign and driveway changes just before the meeting. So I had hoped, and I know everybody was in a hurry to vote on those, but I had hoped to bring up some questions after looking at those. And I'm wondering when I might do that, some, some comments and suggestions.
I think, I think there's still, there's still going to be an opportunity to do that, Kate, for you and anybody else to make comments. But I think the, the mechanism has already been, or the clock has already been started. The process has begun and they sit now with the select board. They will come back to us for ultimate approval at a public, at an open public meeting, at which time we on the planning board and anybody in the public can comment on them. I think that's right.
At that point, will it be too late though to, to make any changes?
I don't, I don't think so. I think we'll still be able to publish and squeeze them in in time for Jennifer, am I going offline? What?
No, I, I just wanted to say that Ned spoke with Phil Arnold about them because a selectman gave them to him. And Phil said that during that public meeting that we're going to have that, that's when you can add or take out things from the bylaws.
Just, just hold on to them and
Right. Thank you.
You'll be able to, you know, make suggestions or ask questions or
So we're not actually, then we don't need to vote on any, on those tonight, right?
Not those.
We, yeah, we haven't gotten them back from the select me yet.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Question. So when it comes to public meeting and people have input, you know, maybe we can make changes. Does then it go back to the selectmen and back like, does it start the whole cycle over?
No, I don't think so. I think it stops with us and the public.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise we'd never finish. Somebody would always have some
Makes, you know, like if anybody has anything that happens, the, anything to say at the public meeting. And then we listen to what everybody has to say and make changes if we want. And then we vote on it and then it goes on the warrant. Is that, is that what I understand?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, it's That's it. The next meeting is the last meeting with any changes.
And then It has to go to the attorney, town council.
Right. But at that point, at that point, it's out of our hands unless town council comes back with, with issues that we would have to address.
Well, just go back to this. I'm sorry. I, you probably just said this, but I thought I heard Roxanne just weigh in. Does it go back to the select board?
Yeah, Roxanne.
It does. It comes back to the select board and then the select board decides what goes on the warrant. But yes, that public comment, the public hearing is when comments amendments are made.
Okay. And then select board, but is it, is that it? The select board have a chance to make any changes when it goes back to you?
No, we decide whether or not it goes on the warrant and we have the ability to create our own bylaws if we would like. And then again, we have to go into public hearing because there's zoning bylaws.
Okay, great.
Does it have to go back to the attorney during, after all that public hearing and then select board and attorney again?
Well, everything goes in front of town council. So yes, but you know, it may do that prior to the public hearing, most likely.
Okay. So there's going to be time before it goes on the warrant then, before town meeting? For all that?
We're hoping so. We don't really, we can't really determine right now a hard and fast date for, for the annual town meeting because we don't know what's going to happen with COVID and the guidelines, et cetera.
Oh, okay.
But, but I think the point you're making Nancy is it only goes to town council once.
Okay, yes. That, that was my question. I didn't know if the whole cycle started over after the public meeting.
Don't, I don't think so. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, technically it's a public hearing, not a meeting. So in order to comply with all the bells and whistles, the attorney general requires, we want to use the proper terminology. And the issue is that the public hearing, as Jennifer knows, has to be advertised for two weeks before we open the hearing on the issues. So that's where the time crunch is coming in. Because we don't, because we don't meet in two weeks, we meet in three weeks. And so it's just something we have to be aware of along with the timeframes. And then there are timeframes for all of the next steps that we go through to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to weigh in. And then once we pass the bylaw, it is sent to the attorney general. And they go through with a fine tooth comb and make sure that every step has been followed. And if it hasn't, they can actually reject bylaws or they send them back and they have to be redone. So this is really critical that we try to do it as correctly as possible.
Okay. Phil, I see you've joined us. Welcome back. We can, okay, good. There you are in person or visually. I'm not sure when you were able to log in, but we were just saying that the sign driveway and parking bylaws remain with the select board. So we're not going to talk about them tonight. Okay. We've just been talking through the process. Once they come back to us from the, from the select board. What we would like to talk about though, are the changes, proposed changes, which the select board has submitted to us to amend sections 4.11.1 and point two in the bylaws, which are it's a section on principal uses. I called it permitted uses, but it's principal uses. And I think you saw the draft or the, the single piece of paper that Jennifer sent around, which showed that changing 4.11.1 one under column B from yes to no, and under column 4.11.2, under column B from SPP to no is what we would like to deal with today so that we can get it, get that process underway with a, with a quick advertisement of a, of a public hearing. I think I've got that right technically. Christine, am I?
You're, you just didn't note that there is a footnote with both of those issues or with the no's that was also included in the draft that we received. And at this point, I think to move the process along, I would like to make a motion that
Whoa. Do I have to ask some questions about this?
Sure. No, I was going to make the motion so we could ask questions and then decide to vote. But if you want to ask questions first, that's fine.
Thank you. Bill, could I ask some questions about this?
Sure.
Okay. Is this the emergency referred to at the last planning board meeting, Christine?
Yes.
Okay, now. So that has the planning board received, I, I'm going to just share my screen because I've got the questions that I have written out, written out. Okay, so who, who is this petition? Can I have a little bit of context? Who is this petition from?
It was submitted to the board of selectmen.
And, and who signed it?
The board, that was with the board of selectmen.
Right, but it's a citizen's petition, correct?
That's what it says. Yes.
And, and who signed it? I mean, a citizen's petition has to be signed. So who has signed it?
I think you have to ask Mike because Mike Canalis must have sent this to you guys because I didn't get it.
No, I didn't get it.
Right. Well, I can answer your question, Kate.
Thank you.
There were two petitions received from business property owners in the downtown business zoning district. One was from Chris Greendale and one was from Judy Abdallah.
Okay. So were they, was the wording the same for each petition or?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then one question I have about this is, and I did see Mike's email, Roxanne, thank you for that. So if an existing residential property owner sells their property, you know, someone who's using a property in the business district as a residence, will the ground floor then be commercial only usage?
No, it would be grandfathered.
Right.
Okay, so
By law, it's grandfathered.
Are we going to get wording on that? Because I don't see that wording in the bylaw.
It is there. Can I share the screen of that diagram that went out or do you have it to share?
I have the, the excerpt from the, from the zoning bylaw, which I can share. Yeah, hold on.
Well, no, I've got what came to us from town council about this.
Which is from our zoning bylaw.
Right.
So feel free to share it. That's fine with me, but it's basically from our zoning bylaw.
Grandfathering is part of the state statute. Protects property owners from changes.
Hang on a sec.
We can't use the word grandfathering any longer because
It's okay.
racist.
Because it's what?
Because way back when your, your grandfather could vote, you could vote. And so if your grandfather couldn't vote, you were not allowed to vote in certain parts of, I guess, Massachusetts. And so one of the appeals court judges ruled that we are not to use that word, but I don't think anyone has
Roxanne, is this what you're talking about?
Hang on a second.
I just shared, shared something out.
I have too many things open here. Hang on. Um, no, no. What, what was sent to you by Mike and I think also by Jennifer, which shows the actual chart that is being changed, the usage chart.
Oh yeah, we got that. That's from the zoning bylaw, the table of uses.
What? Yeah, but there's a significant change. So it's Mike sent it out, I believe in an email showed the existing.
I didn't get that either.
Okay, hang on. Let me see if I can do this. Let me see if I can find it.
I, I think I have it. I can pull it up too.
I sent the one thing I got and that was it.
Yeah, the chart. Yeah.
That from the bylaw. Yeah, that's all I got. Hi. I'm okay. I'm at the planning board meeting at the moment. Okay. Okay, bye. Okay. Does everybody see this?
No.
Yes, I got that. Right.
So you see it, Kate?
Yeah, no, we, we definitely got it.
Right. Well, so if
I don't see it. All I see is your, your
It says PDF. It says W for word. I'm like
District and, but it's not open.
I'm looking at my document, not yours.
Let me go back. Everybody see it now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So the existing, here's the chart. And then at the bottom is the proposed and one family dwelling business district. It says no. And no on two family dwelling. And there's an asterisk. And this is from Donna Brewer. So asterisk, one family dwelling and two family dwelling units are permitted as of right to be located on a premise in the business district when all residential living areas are located above the ground floor of the structure. However, automatically under the law, if it currently is a residence and then this bylaw change is put into place, they can retain it as a residence. So in other words, if they sell the property, it would still be upstairs and downstairs as residential.
Okay, so currently, currently residential stays residential if they sell, if that's what they want to do.
Yes.
Okay.
But if it's a business, then they can't make it into a residence then if it sells.
Correct. It can't go the other way. So if it's currently a business.
Yeah.
Then it can't go backwards. It can't go back to a residence, even though it was whatever 20 years ago.
All right. So that brings me to my next question, which is that has everyone who would be impacted by this change, all owners of property within the business district been notified? And the reason I ask is because this is going to limit the options for property owners in the business district who may want to change from a business to a residential use on the ground floor.
Well, apparently, I mean, I, we didn't ask that specific question, but certainly town council did not indicate that everyone needs to be notified about this. We have two different petitions. They're basically the same petition from two different people. And the rationale being that we have a lot of, in our business zoning district, we have a lot of properties for sale right now. And if one by one, they start being turned into residential properties at street level and we lose those as businesses, fundamentally, there's a very negative impact on every other business. So that potentially we could lose our commercial downtown business district.
And I think to your question, Kate, this will be advertised if we approve it tonight.
And Yeah, there's a public hearing involved.
Be a public hearing at which all interested parties can participate, including all the business owners or residents occupiers in the, in the business owning area.
Right. I, I understand, but I just, to me, this is a definitely a big change. And I would, I mean, personally, my opinion is, is that I would want to take, ensure that there was time that all those business owners, whether they be using their properties as businesses or residential, be notified. There's also, you know, that little section of the business district over where the train station is in that section there. So I, I would strongly urge that careful notification be done. And then, you know, I realize that the muse and the seven arts are for sale. But is this, you know, if this is being driven by the original town hall, you know, where images gallery is and where the Yankee candle used to be. The comment that I would make is that the Yankee candle storefront, that space has been on the market for, for several years and it hasn't sold. So my feeling is that this space, like some other spaces in town, potentially makes sense as, as residential usages. And in the diagnostic report, Joel, and I'll just read it out loud. He had recommended that the select board and planning board consider, and I'm just reading right from the, the report, allow more flexibility for uses in the downtown so that low impact businesses can locate there as well as make downtown use and dimensional regulations more hospitable to small scale residential and business uses. So, um, you know, I'm, I, I feel that this, I can, I can see that the intentions are good here. And I understand that Roxanne, I guess I feel that there needs to be, I personally feel there needs to be a little bit more work done with this. But I'm, I'm probably outnumbered.
There will be a public hearing. So obviously everyone can weigh in on this. And what this is doing based on how it's worded and because of the law, it does protect those properties that currently are residential on the first floor. We have a number of properties that are businesses at street level, but have residential space upstairs. The other thing it does allow is say for the professional building where the bank is upstairs right now, you know, it's been businesses over the years. However, it would allow for the upstairs of that to become residential.
Well, right. Yeah, no, that's, I mean, that's as it is now, which is good. So, you know, so it's good that we're not losing that, but
Well, we are losing our dentist's office up there if you haven't heard.
Okay. I mean, I just think that if I, if I owned property, I guess I'm trying to, the point I'm trying to make is that if I own property in the business district, I would want to know about this change for sure because potentially it's ins limiting my options as a property owner. And
Well, if you're a business owner, it also is protecting your business because if too many properties become residential on the first floor on Main Street and Elm Street in that business zoning district, it will harm all the other businesses, which is the impetus for people signing these petitions. But it's the fear that it will, this could harm their business.
Right. But it's just two people signing a petition is what it sounds like. So this is, you know, why I think it's important to get the word out. I mean, for example, if I own Berkshire Bank, I might say, hey, wait a minute, you know, I want to have the option, which I currently have to have residential, you know, the bank's not doing so great. So I want to close that branch and sell it. And I'd like to have that option to have residential on the ground floor.
The bank does not own the building though.
I'm sorry?
The bank does not own the building.
Who owns it?
Their tenants, Judy Abdallah.
Judy owns the ba- bank building?
Michael's Restaurant, Flattis Building.
Yeah, yeah. Well, maybe that's, that's not a good example then.
She owns three different businesses and Chris owns one. So that's four different properties out of, how many do we have total? You know, not that many. Then you're talking seven arts and the muse. So you don't have a lot of owners. A public hearing, if this is, you know, this would be posted.
Yeah.
With 14 days notice and there will be a public hearing and everyone gets to weigh in on it.
Right. I mean, I just, you know, like Helder has, I gather the muses for, for sale and you know, he should definitely, I just think it's important that people know.
We have, yeah, we have a great deal downtown that is for sale right now.
Can't hurry up here.
It's the majority of the properties right now.
Kate, do you have other, other questions or concerns about this change?
Can I just say that Jennifer
Bill, to answer your question, that's, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I just say, Bill, that Jennifer has been doing this work of notification and putting in the hearing notices in the paper and notifying everyone that's required under the law. So I feel confident that if there is a requirement for notification of a budding property owners and in some instances there is, and in some instances there's not, that Jennifer will follow the law and do what is required. And I think that because it's such a confined area that on the street, this will spread and people will be able to make a decision how they feel about it and then come to the public hearing or submit written testimony. So I think that the interests are being pretty well represented as we go through this process.
Are there any other comments about this, these proposed changes?
Jennifer, I'm going to, I would like to enter my, my comments into the record and I will, I will send those to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's see. We're acting or going to act on a proposal that was sent to us by the select board. This is not actually a public hearing in the strict sense of that term. So do I have to close the public hearing?
No, we have to vote to advertise for a public hearing.
Yeah, right. Okay. Okay. So that's, that's the action necessary is to I guess we shouldn't we vote to, as a planning board to agree with these changes and then to advertise? Or do we advertise without, without endorsement or objection or approval?
No, you should vote.
I thought so.
And whether you want them or not.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's seems logical. So can I have a motion to approve these two changes?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Gary?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Kate?
Nay.
Wayne?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you.
Six and one.
Thank you, Jennifer. Now do we have to vote to advertise or was that implied in the approval?
I think we should vote to advertise just to make sure that the Attorney General doesn't find any problems with how we're doing this.
Yeah, if we have too many votes, probably better than having too few.
Unfortunately, yes.
Yeah. So can I have a motion to promptly advertise this, these changes for a public hearing?
We advertise the changes in bylaw. Whatever the number is.
4.11.1 and 0.2.
1, 1 and 1 and 2.
I was seconded.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Patrick, was that you raising your hand? You're muted.
You're muted.
I only have a procedural question. As the Select Board is allowed to to refer bylaws as well as the Planning Board, what is the process of approval that you just took?
Well, I think what we're doing is we're acting on a petition that was made to the Select Board and was then referred to the Planning Board. So we, the approval we did was, was to approve the changes as, as requested in the petition and, and then we were about to vote to advertise. Advertise a public hearing. Any other comments, questions? So it's been moved and seconded to advertise. Jennifer, can you please call the roll?
Bill?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Kate?
Nay.
Wayne?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think that takes care of that agenda item. We have Phil with us this evening and with the other three, the one, the three bylaws that he's worked so hard on parking driveways and signs still in the Select Board process. Do you want to talk about ADUs? Or is it, is it a good time to do that?
Yes, yeah, definitely. All right. So my last submission of the ADU bylaws were essentially the existing draft, which was developed by the Planning Board, but that was dated November of 2019. So good amount of time has gone on between the development of that draft and now. And I also submitted a very rough initial draft that I've been working on and for the scope of tonight, I pretty much wanted to go ahead of the Planning Board to sort of deviate from the format of the existing draft from 2019 because based on what I've seen in other municipalities in Berkshire County, the format of the draft that I've started to develop, just it seems to be a lot more similar to the other ADU bylaws that I've found that have already been adopted. But I didn't want to, you know, go ahead and deviate from that without the, the go-ahead from the Planning Board. Yeah. But so far, they're fairly similar. They have similar sections on purpose. New definitions, use in dimensional regulations, enforcement, so a lot of typical bylaw language. The main reason for the difference is that the, the existing draft from 2019 is, is about 10 pages long. And generally, the ones that I've found in other towns are about two pages. So I'm, I'm trying to see where there is pretty much just excess language that might not be necessary at all and might make this a little bit more complicated than I think it needs to be. But again, without getting going too far down the rabbit hole, I just wanted to go ahead from the Planning Board to see if I can make some tweaks to it, or I can go off the existing format and see what needs to be changed on that.
Well, I, I favor simplicity and brevity over length. Almost every, every respect, but I welcome thoughts from anybody else. Wayne, were you gonna say something?
No, I just said I agree with the, you know, shorter the better, simple is better. If he feels that that's the better approach, I certainly would trust his judgment.
Yeah, I agree. Other thoughts? Anybody?
I agree.
That was Gary?
Yes.
I can't.
I agree.
Nancy agrees as well.
Yes, I agree. Shorter and more succinct is always better.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anybody?
And not ambiguous.
Exactly, yeah. Is there anybody who disagrees? Marie?
No, I agree. I agree.
Okay. Patrick, I will recognize you if you promise not to tell us you want the longer version. Okay, go ahead. That was a joke.
First of all, I'm speaking as an individual, not as a member of the Select Board. I think that's important to know, both for legal reasons and because that's what I'm doing. I think in general, we should identify the problem we're trying to solve and we should make the minimal change, the bylaw that we can do to solve the problem. Because in the absence of that approach, we open ourselves up to unintended consequences that we may not have thought of. So my philosophy on this approach would simply be to make the minimal change required to accomplish the policy objective that you're trying to accomplish. Thank you.
I think, thank you, Patrick. I, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I think, first of all, I think Phil in drafting the more compact version is going to look at the longer version in the, in the light of your concerns. Is something being, something important being left out that really should not be left out. That's number one. And number two, as we discussed earlier in this meeting, Town Council is going to look at this eventually. And I know she's going to take that same view of, does this condensed, or I shouldn't say condensed, but shorter version, shorter bylaw in any way expose us to, you know, liabilities or risks that we might otherwise avoid if we simply tweaked what we already have and left it at nine pages instead of 10. I, I think we've got those two firewalls, Phil in the first instance, a professional planner, and Donna in the second as our council to protect against the concern you raised. But does anybody else have any thoughts about Patrick's concern or, or comment?
I guess I would say that I think it's important to provide the materials to Planning Board members in a timely way, well in advance of meetings, so that we actually have a chance to review the material carefully.
He should have been sent out on the 24th of last month. So they've been, should have been available for several weeks now, for a couple of weeks.
Okay, great. So it's the version you sent off and sent, sent out in January, but we're not discussing that today, are we?
No, the, the draft from the, the Planning Board, along with my initial draft, was sent out at the, the end of February, just a, a couple of weeks ago. Again, I didn't spend a ton of time tearing the draft apart because I wanted to go ahead from the Planning Board first. I didn't want to, you know, negate the work that's already been done. I just figured that we should have a talk about it like we're doing now, just to see if it's okay to go with a different format. And much of the content of my draft is pretty much taken from the existing draft. But the main difference is there's this one section from the Planning Board's draft from 2009 about the application process. And that tends to be very lengthy and I haven't seen this in other towns. So that's what, you know, I'll, I'll still need some more time with it, but I just wanted to discuss it with you before completely deviating from the existing draft.
Okay, great. So when do you think you'll have that ready to send out?
Hopefully by the end of the week. So that would give you all of, pretty much next week to review before the next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you, Phil.
Sure.
Going over anything tonight with us? That you need our, that you need, you, are you going over anything in this tonight that you need, you know, direction from us on?
I don't think I need, no, I don't think I need direction at this point. I mean, I'm glad you have the material, just so you can see the difference. I just, I didn't want to present a brand-new document, you know, at, at some meeting and then anybody on the Planning Board felt blindsided by it. That, that was the whole purpose of this tonight. Just to make sure we're communicating well. And then the only other development was that, you know, a couple of months ago, there was some new legislation passed that that directly relates to accessory dwelling units and pretty much just the adoption process that a lot of housing reform is intended to be, they're, they're trying to make the process a little bit easier. So if we include either some by right provisions for ADUs within a principal structure, or if they're adopted by a special permit in a detached dwelling, then those can be approved by a simple majority vote instead of two-thirds. We probably don't have to get into that tonight. I mean, it might be beyond the scope of what we're doing, but you know, down the road, once we're looking towards adoption of this bylaw, the process should be a little bit easier.
Good. Thanks.
I think that Phil has really done a remarkably good job of taking some pretty heavy language and simplifying it. And I think on the conversations we've had two years ago, with that, that he recognized the need to make sure that the property was owner-occupied is an important consideration that he maintained. And the administration and enforcement section looks very well-done, Phil. So I appreciate that. The reason that you got the bylaws this, just before the meeting was I was having trouble finding them on my computer because of other issues. And I, so I decided to send them out with Phil's help to everyone, just in case you wanted to have a reference tonight because two weeks ago might have been in a folder that was hard to find. So that was why you just received those.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. Anything else, Phil?
I don't think so. Now that I've go ahead from the Planning Board, I'm just going to try to get a more refined draft of this. And again, we can compare it to the existing one. So I think for now, I'm not going to touch the, the Planning Board's draft at all. And then we'll just continue to, to refine the draft that, that I've been working on and, you know, we can see if anything that I've overlooked maybe needs to be moved from the Planning Board's draft into, into the current one. Well, like I said, they're, they're fairly similar. It's just, it's mainly this section on the application process. And there's, it's strict about submittal and design, exterior alterations, all sorts of stuff. So it's just going to take me a little bit of time to get through that part, but I should have something back to you soon that hopefully will make some sense.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
I think that brings us to the last item on the agenda, which is an update from Jeff Lacy. Jeff is not on this call. It was not planned that he'd be on the call or at this meeting, I should say. At the meeting we had with him last Thursday, it was agreed that the next time we get together with him would be Monday, March 22nd, which is time that he appreciated. It gives him time that he appreciates to work on crafting a an addition to the natural resource protection zoning bylaw that he's already been working on to cover cottager estates or the equivalent. So that's, that is the plan, March 22nd, Monday. Did we agree on a time?
Six o'clock. Six o'clock, Bill.
At six o'clock, yes. Thanks, Marie. Six o'clock or 6:30? So.
Advertised at 6:00.
6:00 to 8:00. I had eight, 6:30, so thanks for correcting me. So that's where that stands. Are there any questions about that?
It's the 22nd. I'm sorry, I missed that.
22nd of March, that's a Monday.
Thank you.
And it's, it's a week between our regular meetings.
Okay, great.
By design. Are there any other comments about that or other items that we need to address tonight?
I would like to bring up what we talked about at the last Planning Board workshop.
Yes.
Was finding a way on the town website to have access to documents that have everything sort of grouped and are easy to find that deal with open space and natural resource protection zoning bylaws. This would be for the people who are professionals who've written some articles. And for some of the materials that we have gotten from Jeff, or most of the materials that we have from Jeff, and just have perhaps an a link from the front page to just be able to hit on these items. So we can start a dialogue that is informed with people understanding the concepts because this is a new concept. It's not really new. It's been around for a while, but it's different than the way we traditionally think in this town about approving subdivisions with a concentration on open space rather than on dimensions of football field sizes. So I think to have a dialogue, it's going to be helpful if people have more information. And so I'd like to continue working on that and come up with, I think we certainly would do the rural sliding principles, the bylaw drafts, the worksheet. They, and then there were several publications that Jeff gave us dealing with the conservation uses and some examples that I think would all be helpful to have on that website. So that's my thought to, to get that started.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I think there's a lot of people on the street that are saying, what's going on? We don't understand it. Why isn't there anything we can find to read? And I think if we put something and we can say, well, look on the website, there's articles there. I think it will really help for people to feel that they're part of, or at least can understand what we're doing. I think that's a good idea, if it can be on our website somewhere, how, somehow.
Right.
I, I agree too, because there's a lot of misinformation out there.
Yes. And people think we're not being very open about things.
Yes.
Unless they go right on our meeting. So I think that's a good idea.
Yes. So why are you not allowing people to ask questions at your meetings?
We are asking them to put their questions in chat and we read all of the questions that are put in chat. At the first meeting, there, it became very difficult for the Planning Board members to get involved and understand what was being presented. And I think other people also were losing what we were trying to work on because there were so many interruptions. And so Jeff was Jeff.
I would suggest that you allow somebody else besides yourself.
You let her finish.
To moderate.
I, Bill runs the meetings. All I do is read the questions. I don't moderate the discussion. Anyone that puts in a question, it gets asked. We don't prevent people from asking questions, but if we don't have some way of monitoring the situation, then people talk over each other and it was unproductive. And we have to make wise use of Jeff's time. However, at this point, we would like to schedule after our next meeting, next Monday, a public information meeting. And at that meeting, we hope that, and this would depend, hopefully we'll have a pretty good handle on the bylaws at the end of next Monday's meeting. And then we can take those and put them out for public discussion. And we can start getting a reaction as to how people like the comprehensive bylaw rather than having a whole lot of discussion on some piece of it that takes people off track and may not be important when we get into another section. So.
But you're not even allowing Planning Board members input into these drafts, Christine. Where, I mean, you haven't even consulted me as to whether I was available for your last two meetings. You're just setting the date. And you've set the date for the next meeting without even asking availability.
Kate, we made it clear from the very beginning that we knew not everybody would be able to get to every meeting.
You did make it clear and you haven't asked a single, for a single meeting of, about availability.
We've had, we've had comfortable quorums at every meeting. You could have asked us to change the date if, if these dates were bad for you.
I did ask you to change the dates.
I, I don't remember that.
I called you up, Bill, and as a courtesy, I said, hey, two meetings in a week is too much. And at that time, you agreed with me. And then you went right ahead and you said two meetings in a week, now twice in, for, for two different weeks. Look, I'm just saying that, you know, if you want to have an open process, you make sure that every Planning Board member can attend, attend at least the majority of those meetings and
And they have.
the drafts and participate.
They have. Has attended.
And this is why we had it at night this time.
The drafts are being sent out and as a fait accompli, there has been no opportunity for me to weigh in on those drafts.
Excuse me.
Jeff has, Jeff has gone through the draft, but there hasn't been any opportunity at all to say, hey, I have a concern about this.
In the meetings that you have not attended, we have had open discussions with Jeff about specific aspects of the bylaw. He's taken notes. He's agreed to make changes. He's explained changes that he's proposing to make. There's been open communication between the planning, the whole Planning Board, or at least the members who show up for the meetings and, and the consultant. So I, I'm sorry.
You know, please do me, please, please don't act like it's just the members who show up for the meetings when you're not asking people about their, their availability to attend the meetings.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Kate, we will welcome any questions or comments that you want to make. We understand that you have other responsibilities. This is additional on top of the Planning Board meetings. And we know that's a lot for some people. However, we have to get these bylaws in some sort of shape so people can react to them. They were promised they would have a bylaw dealing with cottage era or however we were going to define a couple of years ago now. And it's important that the people in the town have something that they can start discussing. And we need to put it out as a draft after the Planning Board members have reviewed it and offered their expertise. And so please, please send your comments. I, you haven't responded that you could not attend the meetings when we've sent out the notice. So we tried, but I, we've done as much as we can to try to make them available to people. And we want your input.
If you send out an agenda and it's, you're posting the agenda, it's not as if I can exactly respond and say, you know, you're not gonna, I know you're not gonna pull the agenda down because you've posted it. So what I'm suggesting is that instead of just setting these meeting dates and saying, this is when we're meeting, that you do what many people do when they're arranging a meeting and, you know, ask about availability.
So when are you available? Are you going to be available next Monday? I mean, that's already been set. So after next Monday, when would you not be available for a meeting?
I cannot meet next Monday. And as you just said, you've already said it. So that's a perfect example. I could meet on the 23rd.
Okay, but that's next week. We've got, when on the following week are you available?
Look, it's, it's the 16th today, so can you change the meeting date next week to the 23rd?
I don't know. I would have to talk with Jeff and we would have to see if CDSB is available. And that is a Conservation Commission evening. So we try to stay away from conflicting with other boards in the town because sometimes those members want to be able to attend our meetings.
Has, has, has a single CONCOM member attended one of your meetings with Jeff?
I don't keep track of who is there and who isn't, but I know there's been some interest by the COMCOM and they're following it, yes. And Patrick's attended certainly, so.
So, you know, I, I think we should close this and move on. I want to get comments or questions, if any, from members of the public to anything that's been discussed this evening at this meeting. If anybody who's on from the public, I see Don and Ann, Anita, Pat. Do any of you have questions or comments? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Sorry, sorry.
I was on another Zoom about the senior housing and came in late. Did you do anything about the, the sign regulations?
No.
Okay.
Still with the selectmen. Did somebody else say something?
Yeah, this is Don and Ann. Thank you very much. No, we had nothing further.
Okay. Thank you all. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I heard a second, I think, from somebody.
I think Nancy's seconded, right, Nancy?
Yes.
Whoever.
Can you call the roll, please, Jennifer?
Yep. Bill?
Hi.
Gary?
Yes.
Gary, Wayne?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Bill. Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you.